Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone here to the Lancaster County Council meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I asked that the clerk note for the record that a quorum of council is present, that public notice of the meeting, including the meeting agenda, has been posted, the required length of time in the lobby of the county administration building and on the county website, and that the news media was notified of the time and place of the meeting. I welcome you to your county council meeting. I would ask that you take a moment to turn off or place on vibrate any cell phones or pagers. Also, thank you for not wearing any hats or caps in the council chambers, and please be considerate of others in the room by refraining from conversations during the meeting. I ask that you stand and join council for the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation given this evening by council member Jose Luis.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come to you today in deep gratitude, gratitude for waking up today, for the beautiful blossoming of spring, for the amazing community we live in, for the freedoms we are blessed with by our amazing country. We ask that you guide us and grant us wisdom as we make decisions that affect our county and our citizens. Please help us to be good listeners, have open hearts and minds to understand, and use our best judgment and integrity to gauge the impact of the choices that we make here. Thank you for your many gifts and for your redemption of us through your Son. May your peace extend to all people everywhere. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
As you can see, we have a large crowd tonight. We have some special guests with us, some of those which you will get to meet shortly. I would like to welcome former councilman Larry Honeycutt is joining us tonight with his wife. They're going to be part of a presentation a little bit later. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted?
So moved.
Have a motion from Ms. McGriff.
Second.
Second from Mr. Luis. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to item 5A, Special Presentations, recognition of art contest winners and essay winners from the Lancaster County School District for Lancaster County Government Month, and they will be presented by Mr. Marstall.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and council members. Great to see everyone in the audience. I'm Dennis Marstall, County Administrator, and April is National Counties Month. And so we've had the opportunity to highlight the variety of county services, some that many of you know about and others that you may not know about, from county services from A to Z. And so when we do that, we get to highlight different things, but we want to engage our young folks. And so in cooperation with the National Association of Counties, we had our local community participate in an art essay contest, and we did flyers to some of the local schools. And so we asked a simple question for the students, and it said, pick a department and describe how this county department operates on a day-to-day basis. So something very simple to talk about that and see what our young people think. We worked with our local schools, so I certainly want to recognize Dr. Fitzpatrick here as superintendent, and I have a lot of teachers and other staff from our school system. So I want to recognize them and thank them for their partnership in highlighting the work of the counties. We had over 12 folks submit essays from the Discovery School, Indianland Middle School, A.J. R. Rucker, and Indianland Intermediate School as well. So we had a lot of folks who were interested, and thanks again to North Elementary. And we had some of our other classes engaged. And so we have three people here tonight, two who did some artwork for us, we're going to highlight in a second, and one who did an essay. So I'd like to first recognize and have them come forward and talk about their artwork. And so we have two people, we'll call them two winners, Caleb Martinez Sharon. Is Caleb here? Caleb, want to come up first? And there's his artwork. You want to stand there, stand right up there, and you can tell us all about your artwork, okay?
Okay. Okay. Now, now first, now first, we just, we made, we made, we just made the hospital truck of all, of all of you. And Uncle Jeremy, the hospital worker, is always, is always, is always, just always help people. EMS helps people too. And my dad.
You're done. Thank you. So highlighting our EMS work, and so happy to have him highlight. Thank you, Caleb. And then you may recognize this person and name from last year. Come back again to highlight, Rui Amand. Come up here if you would for us and tell us about your artwork. And I think she's going to talk about the Sheriff's Department.
First, I want to give some thanks to Ms. Dean for coming and taking her time to come and support me, and the police officers for keeping us safe. So I'm showcasing how the Lancaster Sheriff's Office works day and night to keep us safe. And every morning, they have kids like me cross the road safely. They make sure everyone follows rules, help find lost things or people, and stop anyone who tries to do something wrong. They are our friends and heroes who protect our community.
Great. Thank you very much. Rui's from Harrisburg Elementary, and Caleb is from North Elementary, and I know they got family and teachers here, so thank you two very much. And then for our essay contest, we have from Indianland Intermediate, Nora Harder, to come up here and read her essay, if she would please. Nora, congratulations.
Thank you. I would like to thank Deputy Thompson for helping me with this essay. And I did an interview with her, and she was really helpful with some questions I had. There are many departments in the county that operate each and every day, but one of the most important ones is the Sheriff's Department. The Sheriff's Department, or SD, works hard and does their very best to make sure everyone in Lancaster County is maintaining public safety. There are three areas in which the county focuses on public safety. The first one is responding to emergencies. Second, they prevent and investigate crimes. And third, they enforce the law. For example, one of the deputies is always outside in the morning and the afternoons directing traffic throughout the school's car line, making sure drivers are obeying the speed limit, deputies on the night shift, and property checks, and responding to calls. Some calls can be about criminals, robberies, fires, and serious injuries. Officers are always on the streets at night to prevent anything from going wrong. They are patrolling on the streets and investigating crimes. Without the Sheriff's Department around, many things could go wrong. Officers and deputies are always trying their best to prevent and investigate crime. If someone is driving under the influence, they could easily get involved in a car accident and hurt themselves or an innocent victim. If there is a shooting, they make sure that they catch the shooter and arrest them. The police have to investigate such crimes and determine who's responsible and help make sure that such crimes never happen again in an effort to keep the citizens in the county safe. Deputies are always enforcing laws and making sure the citizens are following them. For example, when someone is driving under the influence or speeding, the deputies may give them a ticket or a warning. If someone doesn't follow the law, they may be charged, and it would pit on their criminal record. The police don't enjoy doing this, but they would rather see them succeed in life. Unfortunately, it is a part of their job as a deputy or police officer. In conclusion, you can see that the public safety is an important part of the deputy's job in the county, from enforcing laws, investigating and preventing, and preventing crime, and responding to calls. In any minute, their day can change abruptly, and I'm so thankful that they're in the community to serve and protect us.
Very well done. Nice. I believe Chairman Carnes has the names of the submittals. Is that correct?
I've got, let's see, we've got art winner. I don't have any names here.
Okay, well, we'll take it from here. We've got other teachers. Do you have the teachers?
The teachers we have from North, Rebecca Hammond.
Thank you for your work as a teacher.
Ms. Radaboff at Harrisburg Elementary.
Thank you.
And then we have Assistant Principal Gina Dean. Ms. Elizabeth Bryant is here with us as well, and we also have a school board member, Mr. Reverie Johnson, is here as well from, from the school district.
Great. And to, and superintendent, we got him. And to end the awards.
She's already named a superintendent.
We do have gift cards and certificates for all the winners, so I'd like to ask the winners and their families to please come forward for a picture. Rui, if you want to come join with your family, we'll get a picture. If you look back there, if you want to hold that. Okay. Caleb, come on up here again, Caleb. Got family with you? Here's a certificate for you. Want to hold that, look that?
Let's stand up and give them all a round of applause. Okay, we're going to go to item 5B, recognition of the 2024 Volunteer of the Group Award, Larry Honeycutt Award, and the 2024 Volunteer of the Year Award, the Frank Ferguson Award for the Keep Lancaster Beautiful Committee. Ms. Kato.
This is always, could I hold the mic? Could I hold the mic? All right. Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for giving us this time to recognize some of the people that make what we do possible. So I am with Keep Lancaster County Beautiful, and we've been at it for about five years now. And for the last three, we've recognized individuals and groups for the work that they've done to help us. And we always like to thank our founding fathers, which is Mr. Larry Honeycutt and Mr. Frank Ferguson. Yes. And so we have, they will be doing the presenting of these awards. They started this years ago. Mr. Honeycutt's a legend in this, these chambers for throwing litter on the floor that was in his yard to let them know that we needed a Keep Lancaster County Beautiful organization. So first of all, if I could have Mr. Honeycutt to come on up here, he's going to present an award. He will present the first one. And this is for the Volunteer Group of the Year, and it is going to Land United, the soccer team. So if you guys, whoever wants to accept that award, come on up here.
That's a big group. Land United.
I'm starting to understand that high bag count that Indianland always turns in when they pick up litter. Thanks, guys. And it's always fun when you try to get people to come to the meeting, and you don't really want to tell them why. So we will let Leslie come up here. Leslie is the daughter of Frank Ferguson, so she's going to present the award in her dad's name. And she knows a few things about dedication of Coach Humphrey that she will share with you all that is kind of interesting.
As an example of his dedication, on January the 20th, 2024, he and the Lancaster High School civitans collected litter. The high temperature was 22 degrees with winds at 16 miles per hour. And so that is deserving of an applause on its own. In addition, he has recruited five international teachers to collect litter with him. And that is just of his asking them to do that, and they were so willing to do that when many of us struggle to get our friends and coworkers to pick up litters. It's just fantastic, Mr. Humphrey, and we appreciate you very much.
And just for a minute, I have a lot of board members here. If you guys would just stand, because this is what the success of our program right here. There we go. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all of our volunteers. The county would not be what the county is without the vol, all the volunteers that participate in all the programs that, that we have. We're going to move on to citizen comments now. Oops. Oh, we got, sorry, trying to move ahead to airport update. Mr. Green.
And Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Green comes up, the audience, I know it's an exciting topic, but if some folks in the audience need to head out, we'll give them a second here.
They don't want to hear about the airport?
They not only have one.
There's our audience. It's a little fussy. There we go.
I think we're good. If you want to go ahead and start, Mr. Green?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Marstall. As he mentioned, my name's Tim Green, project manager for Lancaster County. So I'm pleased to report tonight that we see the light at the end of the tunnel with the terminal construction at the airport. This first slide is going to be just a real quick overview of the cost information. I believe Mr. Marstall is going to address this.
Yes. So I want to make sure you saw, we've had adjustments over time. When we did the notice to proceed, we had a $7.3 million project. Council did adjust the county share down to 2.5 million was allocated. If you see, I think it's roughly 34% of the project cost. We were successful to get the federal, we call it BIL grant, but we also have significant state funding from the state, South Carolina Aeronautics Commission. And there's still, we've got this programmed out with basically four years of grant funds. But as you'll see there, barring anything in the next month, we are going to be under the county share by 69,000. So we are still within the county budget. And from our original budget, when we did the notice to proceed, it's still roughly the 7.3 million. So.
Next slide. This is just a brief overview of the schedule for the project. And as you see, we started way back in 2022 with our funding attempts with the airport terminal program. We issued, they issued the notice, notice to, of intent to award back in June of 2022. And then, and then we did get the announcement of the intent to fund our terminal back in February of 2023. October, we had our pre-construction conference after our bid opening and got our permits issued in the spring of 2024 and started work about that time. We did have a slight hiccup challenge for us with the sewer line, gas line transmission that crosses the airport property. So we had to regroup and reconfigure the sewer line to get through that gas conflict. And just, just quickly, we think we're going to get a certificate of occupancy later in May. And then, and then we got some furniture delivered first week of June, and welcome desk installation the last week of June. And we're shooting for a ribbon cutting ceremony to include all of you in July. We haven't pinned down that date yet, but we should be getting that soon. So the next slide there, I'm just going to briefly cover just a few slides, kind of showing the progress of construction that we did. This first slide is just an aerial photograph of the old terminal to the left there, and the hangars to the right. The new terminal building is going to occupy that land just to the left of the old terminal where the, where the old parking lot is. Next slide. And as I mentioned, we started construction with slab and started going up with the structure in February. Next one. Started seeing some exterior siding put on, in the, on the building back in March. In May, brickwork interior started to come together. June 2024, we saw windows installed. Next one. August, started seeing HVAC work and electrical work done, and then started working on some of the exterior entrance to the building. And in October, start seeing insulation put in, in the, in the overhead there, and some drywall started going up. Then last Christmas, you start seeing some of the interior come together with the paneling and the siding and painting inside the rooms. And then in February, you start seeing some really good finish work done inside the terminal. And then in April, that's, that's basically what it looks like now. Got a lot of debris and, and work still, still be done inside the building. The remaining work, the major remaining work, the next slide there, is the parking lot. This is, we are anticipating stone going down in the parking lot later this week. Should be having some paving put in by mid-month. And then we got, Duke Energy is putting in the lighting in the parking lot. Like I said, we anticipate the furniture at the end, first week of June, and then the welcome desk installation is going to be last week of June. And believe it or not, this photograph is not an actual photograph. It's a rendering, but it does look pretty real. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we're shooting for the ribbon cutting in July. And then that'll, that'll bring me to my last slide, the questions. And I will say that that, we just installed, our contractor just installed that sign on the airside of the terminal within the last few weeks, and it is lit at night.
Any questions? Any comments?
Comments. Tim, I want to personally thank you for overseeing this project through, and everything's coming along nicely. I also would like to thank Paul Moses, our director of the airport, for his and Ken Hope, their vision and getting us Lancaster County all the grants that we're getting over the years that they've done. And his grants really helped us get this airport. I don't think we would have got it without it, so.
It's going to be a nice ribbon cutter.
It is. Thank you.
And I agree with everything Billy said. I won't repeat it, but we appreciate it.
Any other comments? Thank you for keeping the project in budget.
I do, excuse me, I do want to highlight that part of the project budget originally included demolition of the existing terminal. So that's some of the savings that we've, unless you want to do something differently, is keep the existing terminal and hopefully maybe refurbish it with maybe a private company for services there. But I don't know if you've heard the conversation earlier about demolishing it, but as of now, we're going to maintain the existing terminal and repurpose it for other services.
All right. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to citizens' comments. We're now at citizens' comments. Please bear in mind that this is not a period of dialogue but council or a question and answer period. This is your opportunity to address council with your concerns. I ask that you address your remarks to council as a body and not to any individual council member. Please speak into the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and you will have up to three minutes to address council. Your time will not start until you have provided your name and address. And I was a little remiss at the start, but we also have former chairman Rudy Carter here with us. He is the chairman of the CTC, and he's going to come up and speak to us first.
My name is Rudy Carter. I preside at 2558 Naughty Pine Drive, Lancaster. Mr. Chairman, council members, staff, it's always a pleasure to get to see you from this side, because I don't have to put up with none of the joke that y'all have to put up with, except listening to me. I am here tonight representing the CTC, County Transportation Committee, which I am chairman of, and it's pertaining to the vote for the one cent sales tax. I know we failed miserably last year, but we want to try and revive it and put it back on the agenda for a vote again this year. And you may say, well, that's too soon. Let me tell you, when you start looking at the oil market, not every year, but every month, the prices escalate and escalate greatly. We've got a lot of hours put into looking at all the roads, all the roads in the county. And y'all, we have got some pitiful roads. I'm sure you've ridden over them. Billy, you got somebody in your area that, where I had a man come up to me one time and said he had, saw a car come up out of a pothole. And that's, that's pretty bad. All of you, all of you's got bad roads. Ms. McGriff, you in the city, I mean, really, it's terrible. But we get approximately one and a half million dollars a year. And that's a lot of money, until you start looking at $350,000 per mile to resurface. And that was last year's effort. I don't know what it is today. What was that, three miles, four miles? We have 900 miles in this county, and we are expected to get them fixed. I get calls all the time, when are you going to fix my road? Well, I had one lady got on me sick hot and heavy. She said, what will it take? I said, we take MasterCard, Visa, check, cash. And that's the bottom line, you know. I have to tell you, the money has got to be there. And this one cent sales tax will give us a revenue stream for the next 10 years to do these roads. Without it, we've got a million and a half dollars. Take what you get. That may be a harsh way to put it, but it's the truth. If we don't have the resources to do the job that we're done to do, Mr. Harper had got me, finagle me to get into this, so I blame it on him. But it's, it's honestly and truthfully, we honestly need this thing. It's never going to be a good year. I can tell you that. But we've already begun to formulate some ideas of getting out into the communities and instructing the people or showing them where the money's going to go. That's what we didn't do last time. People just went up to the polls and said, I ain't voting for no tax. But I believe they will if they see, and they're, they're seeing what we're doing now. I'm sure y'all have seen a lot of roads in your areas that have been paved, have been fixed, and people are tickled to death with it. So that's what we want to keep on. My time is up. So thank you for listening, and if you see fit, please put it on the agenda, on the, on the ballot again this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Ms. Jean Doyle?
Good evening. Thank you for the meeting tonight. Interesting that he was just talking about the, oh, Jean Doyle, 6030 Kings Canyon Way in Lancaster. Actually, I was up here on an issue that has to do with the road. And I don't know if it's a county, an SC DOT issue or a county issue. Between Route 5 and Van Wyk Road on Steel Creek, there are signs that specifically state no truck traffic. And I cannot remember ever going on that stretch of road without seeing semis, big semis, lumber, you know, big lumber trucks. There was even a picture of one of an accident that was in the Lancaster News last week. The stretch of road was in terrible shape, absolutely terrible shape. There was a low area that had a lot of potholes. They had been repaired over and over again. But last year, the road was completely scraped, redone. It's beautiful. It's wonderful. Parts of Van Wyk have been done. It's being finished right now. But I don't understand if there's a sign that says no trucks, why they're allowed to continue to go over their road. They're just going to beat it up. But again, I don't know if that's a county issue or an SC DOT issue, who's in charge of enforcing that or who even put up the signs to begin with. There's been a lot of noise lately, just now, about taking care of our roads. And I'm sure there's no plans to fix that road for probably another 10-plus years. So I'd like to see it taken care of by not having the trucks going over it all the time. The truckers, you know, talk to each other all the time. If a few of them were ticketed, you know, they'd say, oh, you better stay away from that stretch because there's somebody handing out tickets. And it would be something that would need to be repeated, but it was just really interesting to see the, see this picture, this accident. There were two trucks on that stretch of road, whatever day this was, April 23rd, that this accident occurred. So that's all. Just want to take care of what's already been fixed so that it lasts a little bit longer. Thank you.
You, Ms. Doyle. Okay, that concludes citizens' comments. We do have some ones that came in via the internet. Ms. Simpson.
Mr. Chairman and council members, you all have physical copies of these three electronic citizens' comments that came in. The first was from Steve Willis of Lancaster, South Carolina. He asked council to increase taxes so as to not have to decrease service levels due to continued growth in the county. Brian Marble from Indianland, South Carolina, wrote in regarding no one answering the phones at the county office building. And number three, Yates Dunaway from Charlotte, North Carolina, regarding being available for questions on item 8B.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. Okay, we're going to move now on to item seven, Consent Agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Consent Agenda, items 7A, 7B, 7C, and 7D.
I have a second from Mr. McGriff. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. It's unanimous. Okay, we're going to move on to item 8A, Public Hearing and Third Reading of Ordinance An ordinance to authorize the execution and delivery of a special source revenue credit agreement by and between Lancaster County and an entity identified by the county as Project Block, including any related or affiliated entities providing for special source revenue credits, and to express the intention of county council to provide monies to the Economic Development Fund. Mr. Fulk, we do have a public hearing, so I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, you don't need a motion for a public hearing. You can just open it and close it.
All right. Thank you. I thought I could, but I thought we were doing that in last meeting. So we're going to open, declare the public hearing open. No one signed up for it, so I will declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Fulk.
Yes, good evening. You, good evening, council members. You have before you now for third reading, Ordinance 2025-1951 to authorize the execution and delivery of a special source revenue credit agreement. This agreement runs for 20 years. Project Block, called now Old Castle APG South, Inc., DBA doing business as Adams Products, is a subsidiary of a European entity and has operations throughout the United States. They purchased an existing building, 30,000 square feet, and site in a multi-county park, 20 acres in District One. The site is zoned HI-heavy, heavy industry. The company manufactures architectural stone products that might be found around a pool or outdoor living area. The company plans to invest $21 million in total and employ 30 people by the end of the five-year investment period, starting in 2024. Failure to meet either the investment or jobs commitment shall result in a termination of the SSRCs, Special Source Revenue Credits, in the year of the miss and retroactively. The company commits to a minimum investment of $15 million and 20 employees. Average wages by the end of 2025 are expected to be $26.69 per hour. With full production, the average wages will be $22.32 as an estimate. The company benefits package is generous, providing medical dental vision, matching 401K. These benefits total about 35% of an individual's wages. In the agreement, council commits to provide SSRC incentives equal to 25% equivalent for each year for five years with a fixed millage. With a 25% SSRC, the county is offering $319,000 in incentives over a five-year period. These, the SSRCs will end, but the property tax stream should continue for many years. Specifically over 20 years, we expect the county to collect nearly $3 million in taxes while having provided tax abatements of just $319,000. To summarize the benefits to Lancaster County and constituents, the company will produce a product that tends to add beauty to the living, living areas and surroundings. They will employ 30 new workers, not just moving workers from one state to another. The company will pay property taxes that will lessen the tax burden for homeowners. The Economic Development Department supports this project and requests an affirmative vote from council for this third ordinance, 2025-1951.
Thank you, Mr. Fulk. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Luis, second from Mr. McGriff. Any discussion or any questions of Mr. Fulk?
No, I'd just like to, if this passes, welcome. Old Castle, I think they're a, this is not a startup. They're a major corporation. They've, they have private, it's a private, or you don't know.
Because it goes to Ireland.
Okay.
And I don't know who, who actually owns the top, the top company. They've, they've got a number of operations throughout.
We welcome to Lancaster County.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Now we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item seven, 8B, Public Hearing and Third Reading of Ordinance 2025-1961. An ordinance to approve a First Amendment to the Development Agreement between Lancaster County and Crosland Southeast for a mixed-use townhome multifamily apartment and non-residential development project known as The Exchange upon approximately 130 acres of land located at 8918 Charlotte Highway, Indianland, South Carolina, establishing the regulations for the development of the property and other matters related thereto. I'll call the public hearing to open. There was no one that signed up, so we will call the public hearing closed. We have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a motion from Mr. McGriff.
Second.
Second from Mr. Luis. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it is unanimous. And we'll go on, move on to item 8C, A Resolution Number 1293-R2025. A resolution to state the commitment of Lancaster County to enter into a fee agreement with Project Janus, including the provision of special source revenue credits to provide the general terms of the fee agreement and to provide that this resolution is an inducement resolution for purposes of the Fee in Lie of Tax Simplification Act and to state the commitment of Lancaster County to place property owned or leased by Project Janus in a multi-county park. Mr. Fulk.
So we have before you today a Resolution 1293-R2025 related to Project Janus. Project Janus is an indirect subsidiary of a large European, European-based entity, the parent in existence since the late 1800s. The state of South Carolina is supportive of this project, and we've worked with the SC project manager, Tony Allen, on this for almost a year. The company plans a Lancaster County location to distribute and assemble products mostly imported from Europe. These power-related products are sold to commercial users mainly. The project involves the consolidation and movement of existing sites in another location outside of South Carolina. The company plans to invest in the first phase, $51 million, and employ 163 people by the end of the five-year investment period, starting in 2025. Company will use its available cash for these investments. Average wages are expected to be $32.11 per hour for the entire operation, with unskilled laborers making an estimated $22.25 per hour. The company currently imports through the port of Wilmington. However, there's an effort to convince the company to consider using Charleston for the new operation. The company's benefit package is satisfactory, with the company offering medical dental vision to all full-time employees. There's also a short and long-term disability coverage that is made available. In this resolution, council commits to provide special source revenue credit incentives equal to 50% for the first 10 years, followed by 25% for five years. This offer is consistent with prior large state-supported projects in Lancaster of the scope. The term of the related FLO agreement is 20 years with a five-year investment window. The agreement provides for assessment, an assessment ratio of 6% and a fixed millage rate. This project produces a satisfactory and above-average return on investment for the county. The company commits in our agreement to a minimum investment of $41 million and 125 employees. The company representatives and engineers made a pre-presentation to the technical review committee last week, and this review and feedback process shall consent, shall continue, including evaluations of any traffic issues, so I understand. The Economic Development Department supports this resolution and requests your affirmative vote. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion to approve?
Yes, Mr. Harper. Have a motion from Mr. Harper. We have a second.
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Neal. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous. Okay, we'll move on to item 8D, First Reading of Ordinance 2025-1964. An ordinance to authorize and approve the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of tax and incentive agreement between Lancaster County, South Carolina, and Project Janus, providing for the payment of a fee in lieu of taxes and the provision of special source revenue credits to express the intention of council to provide monies to the Economic Development Fund and to provide other matters related thereto. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Mr. Luis and a second from Mr. Mausteller. Mr. Fulk.
You have before you ordinance 2025-1964. The structure of the negotiated fee in lieu of tax agreement contains a provision to measure performance as to investments and employees. In this agreement, any excess performance in one area, more investments than committed to or more employees, will be used to counter or offset any performance failure in the other area. Evaluation of compliance with the contract minimum, $41 million in investment, shall be first done in five years at the end of the investment period. In the event the contract minimum is not satisfied or the jobs commitment not achieved, the SSRC will be reduced retroactively. To summarize the benefits to Lancaster County constituents, the company will employ up to 50 new workers within the 163 they, they plan to, to have at the facility. The company will also pay significant property taxes over the life, life of the project, which should extend beyond 20 years, helping to lessen the tax burden for homeowners in the county. The Economic Development Department supports this project and will request an affirmative vote from council. And again, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Fulk. Are there any questions? Mr. Fulk. Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on now to item 9A, Miss, receive information and take desired action regarding appointments to various boards and commissions. Ms. Simpson.
Mr. Chairman and council members, so the first item is reappointments to the Keep Lancaster County Beautiful Board. A second term for Ann Ferguson, a second term for Greg Gregory, and a first term for Claire McConaughey, as she is currently filling an unexpired term.
Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Harper and a second from Mr. Mausteller. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous.
The second item is for reappointment to the Recreation Advisory Board. A second term for Michael Fullerson and a second term for Brent Stogner.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Mr. McGriff, we have a second.
Second.
Second from Mr. Neal. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous.
Then the third item is just current vacancies for your, to, to look at and upcoming commission and expirations. Please remember that those do not include what you voted on tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Simpson. We'll move on to item 9D, Rise Lane Alternate Project Proposal.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. We're back, back in March, we discussed Rise Lane. It is one of two remaining projects on the Capital Sales Two Proviso Road List. And when we had a public meeting end of January, good turnout and what kind of led us to this point is a lot of the citizens made us aware there was no fire hydrant on the road for fire suppression for those 17 residents on Rise Lane. So while we were finishing up the design for the widening, which does include a relocation of the two and a half inch water line that's existing, some of it under the pavement, some of it in the shoulder, we asked to look into what it would, what it would cost to do this, add this into the bid. And the costs were very, very high, so we wanted to come back to council for some guidance. Again, the plan we have that is pretty much ready for bid and has been is to continue with relocating the two and a half inch water line and paving and widening the road to 18 feet of pavement with your roadside ditches. Again, the water line cost in that just simple relocation is $175,000. And then the roadway costs, which includes the 18 feet of pavement plus the ditches, around $405,500 estimate, with an estimated total construction for option one at about $580,500. Again, that's an engineered estimate. We have not bid or opened bids on the project. And then on option two is to upgrade to a six-inch water line that will allow for fire suppression, but you're going to have to go back to one of three different locations off of Silver Run Road because there's, the entire line on Rise Lane would need to be upgraded. You'd have to tie into where there's a six-inch line. And again, it needs to connect to existing six-inch water facilities. And there were three concepts you can look at at that, and you know, all of them being very, very costly. The alternate one is for the water line upgrade to six inches, $610,000 estimate. And then with it all in, including the roadway, which the roadway amount stays the same because you're still going to widen to 18 feet. That puts it at a price tag of about $1,015,500. Alternate two, again, this hydrant would be a little bit closer, $515,000 on the, on the upgrade. And then the total, all in total for that, $920,000. And alternate three would be $725,000 for the water line upgrade and the all-in total of $1,130,500. And again, these were just what we did as a result of the, the public meeting and not know, typically with the projects, public works is going to add. know, typically with the projects, Public Works is going to administer on county roads, we don't own or operate the water system, so it's not really in our wheelhouse in the past to, to do this, but again, while we were there, we've added it in, and that's why we're asking for guidance. Let's see if I can get to the, always have trouble with this. Okay, and here's, it's hard to see, but there's one of the maps. One of the hydrants would be just into the Yellow Springs Drive Development off Silver Bind. If you can go to the next one, Jerry. Another one hydrant is on Silver Run Road itself, and the last one, I believe, is in the Silver Run Development there. We can go to the next one. Okay. And then there's an option three, which was kind of, if you go way back to 2017, which is what we had in mind back then, but that was before we knew that was right-of-way there, before we knew that the first 900 feet or so was actually maintained by the DOT, and before we, you know, had the funding to put into a design to build a, a better road. Again, with Rise Lane, we've said it all along, been saying it for years, the problem there is the width. This is basically two-foot widening of the existing pavement, resurfacing the road. Now, under this concept, water line stays exactly where it is. Again, that's, gives you a cost of about $244,000 for the roadway, still going to be some minimal clearing that Public Works would do in-house, small trees, shrubs in the right-of-way, about $6,500. Again, that's an in-house, that would give you a construction option of around $250,500. But again, with option three, it's kind of a lesser option, and again, we did talk to staff with the Water and Sewer District and told them that this could be an option, and obviously he said he would kick that up to his, you know, chain of command and possibly get to their board, and they may call. It's not, they're not going to be happy with it, because with anything, even moving the water line or any roadway work, damage during construction of, of damaging the water line, they come out and fix it. With this one, when your, when your widening is done, your water line's under the pavement, and so if they ever have any leaks or problems with it, the Water and Sewer District will have to cut the road, dig out and patch. So that's, that's kind of the idea here now of moving the utilities out of the right, or stay in the right-of-way, but move them out of the pavement itself. So that was an option three that staff has done since our last discussion. Next one, please. And then, of course, the one that's, obviously none of us hope that we recommend is no construction along, along Rise Lane. Everything stays as is until you find a funding source at some point in the future. I would note that with this one, because this was placed on the Proviso by ordinance, have to be taken off by an ordinance, so this is really where we're at, we'll open the floor, you know, for council to discuss, answer any questions we have. Again, we're just looking for guidance, and we really need to move forward with this, even though we knew that the last two roads on the Proviso would be difficult because of the design features they had in them, but this has gone on for a long time, and we really need to resolve the issue on Rise Lane. Thank you.
All right. Mr. Kato, Ms. McRiff.
Maybe I'm confused here, and please correct me. A couple of meetings ago, we voted $900 and some thousand dollars toward this project, or did we not? So explain to me what happened.
We did not. We came, at the last meeting, it was the intent for us to tell you that after the public meeting, when we looked to adding a design to adding a hydrant and upgrading that line to the six-inch, that the costs would escalate up to, at that time, near around $900,000 or higher, all-in total construction cost.
And did we not agree on that?
No.
We were, so we clarified that was a project update, because the funding exists within the Proviso, so there's funds available at that amount even, and so we gave you the project update, and then hearing some of the feedback on that project update.
So the $900,000 that we talked about to fund this project was just discussion?
We could move forward, and we could still move forward as a-
I don't know what I missed at that meeting.
And so also to be clear is that there are two, this is part of Proviso funding, so there are two projects left on the Proviso funding, Rise Lane and Cleveland.
Yeah.
If we don't use all the money that's still currently available in the Proviso, it will go into Capital Project Sales Tax III Burst Project Detention Center. So any excess funds, no matter what project or how you do it, even with Cleveland, if there's any excess funds, it will go into the detention center.
Mr. Chairman, are we looking for a vote on this?
Yes, we're looking for it.
I'm not finished, because I'm, I'm, I want to understand where we're at. What, we don't use or move toward the detention center, I understand that part, but the last discussion, we, we discussed Cleveland Street and Rise Lane, that we had money in the Proviso to fund those. So the discussion around that last meeting was not to fund it, just letting us know what was available?
Yes, there's a project, because they've been approved, and Rise Lane in particular, by council action for the Proviso, so they've been approved projects, there is funding available, and so we're giving that project update. Hearing from that project update, there's concerns for the cost escalations.
Yeah, and I think my, my comment or position was, if we got money left in the Proviso, let's provide the services to the folks on Rise Lane and Cleveland Street, because I did have some people from Rise Lane to call me and say, "Thank y'all for agreeing to do it," so I'm like, I'm kind of confused.
Well, I think, I think, I don't want to, from my perspective, it's not a question of not doing something on Rise Lane, the, the question is, is along the water line and the cost to basically make changes to the water line. So to me, if I'm, if I'm understanding this correctly, option three leaves the water line in the same place, but if there's something wrong with that water line at some point, then they got to come in there and mess up the road, which we're going to have to fix again, but, I mean, the difference is in cost is like, I mean, that's like $800,000, so I'm pretty sure that we can patch that road up if there's a issue with the water line for less than $800,000, is the way I'm looking at it, unless I'm completely missing something.
Yeah, I'm looking, we're looking at options now, I'm, you know, I was under the impression that we said that we had the money, let's move forward. I was okay with that. I'm, I'm okay with the options as long as we do it right. You know, I don't want us to have to do anything. We're going to do the project, let's do it right, and if we need to correct the water lines, and we've got the money, let's do it. That's just my position. And I, I do want us to service the folks in that area, service them correctly, because they also are under the impression that we're going to do something.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought we, we discussed Cleveland Street, moving forward with that. My knowledge, we did on it, didn't we? I know.
Yes.
Correct, yeah, Chris, Cleveland Streets, and we may be going to bid on Cleveland Street.
Cleveland Street was bid at, at our last meeting. It was an update, but really the concern, like I said, with Rise Lane, we took the design originally to widen the road and relocate the two-and-a-half-inch water line. We did not have putting a fire hydrant and upgrading the entire system up to a six-inch water line. That's where we were seeking guidance from because of the cost escalations. The costs are higher now than what we estimated back in 2021 for both Cleveland Street and Rise Lane, and, and really anything, if you've had on, you know, on estimating since 2021 and 2025, they have gone up, but to do this, add this upgrade, this water line was going to be a significant cost. So again, we were just making you aware, we have the package, the package we have ready is option two, which is to relocate the two-and-a-half-inch water line and widen the road to a uniform 18-foot of pavement. Now, again, we do not have, it would take a little bit more design if we were going to go and upgrade the water line to add a fire hydrant. That's, that's where we're kind of wanting the guidance, because again, Public Works doesn't administer the, the water lines, that's not really in our call, so we're, we're just looking for guidance from the administrator and council on which way to move forward, but we have option two is ready to, ready to bid. It hasn't been bid yet, so those are still just-
Do we have money to pay for that?
Yes, ma'am, we do.
So basically, we got a low, middle, and a high.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, the, the middle, I think, meets most of what the criteria was when it started originally, with some, a little bit of cost escalation, because before, we weren't thinking about having to move the water line at that point in time.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Luis.
So, I, I appreciate these options, because as I mentioned the last time this came up, I was very concerned about the cost escalations that have occurred over time, and as you may know, I did write an op-ed about this. I did hear from a lot of residents, I did speak to the residents, I have visited this community after that meeting, and the overwhelming response that I have heard is, they are concerned about the road widening. That's their biggest thing, that's the promise that apparently was made years ago. That's where we need to focus on. I, I agree with Mr. Graham that looking at the cost for moving the water line, if the reason we're doing that is if there's some issue at some point later on, that something needs to be done, then I think it would be much more affordable to repair that section of the road at that point. In addition, I would imagine that this road, let's say there's a problem 10 years, around 15 years from now, there may be additional repairs that need to be done, so we can constantly be monitoring that at that time. I don't think this is something that we need to prepare for and expend those amount of sums for something that may happen at some future point, when we can satisfy what we had told these residents, what I have communicated with these residents and what I have heard directly from them. So I, I appreciate your efforts, and I appreciate you looking at the original intent of what we had discussed, so thank you for that.
I just think that we need to remember as we go forward, that if we get to that situation, and it, well, most likely, it might be sometime when we're all on council or sometime in the future, but, you know, it's going to be an emergency at that point in time, if you got to go in and repair the road, which is going to mean there's going to be money to, that are not budgeted, so we just need to remember that, whatever direction we go.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, and with that, that was the intent in, in going in, again, we would, we designed it to relocate, to move the two-and-a-half-inch water line out of the pavement. That's kind of the rule of thumb to do now, but one thing has changed in the past, is where the utility providers used to move, would move things for free now under state law, the municipality or organization that's constructing, doing the work in their right-of-way, they are responsible for relocating the utilities. So that is why we went in way back in 2021, when we had the funding source of the Proviso and set to relocate the two-and-a-half-inch line.
Jeff, with, with all of your knowledge and experience, do you have a recommendation to council?
I just want to fix it. Again, and how we're, how we're doing things, again, you, you know, I see it, and like I said, this was, this was just really after the public meeting, talking about adding the hydrant. Hey, we're going to be there, okay, but it is just different when you go into it thinking, so, okay, well, you're already moving the water line, just upgrading it to six inches shouldn't be that bad, but that, that is the cost. I mean, we're relocating the water line on Cleveland Street, that's a half a million dollars to relocate, to get that out of the, under, from under the DOT pavement, so that, that was why we were doing that. I, I see what you're saying with option three, but you, again, you're asking me my opinion here, I think option three, while it does, you know, moves it from 12 feet to 16 feet in some places, I, I still think you might be going a step backwards, but again, that's, that's my opinion, again.
So you would go with which option?
I would go with how we designed it from the beginning with, the relocation of the existing two-and-a-half-inch line.
And that's which option?
Two.
Go back to two. That's one point.
But again, with two is going, again, that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, option one.
Yeah, that's about-
Go back, go back, okay.
Yes, with that, that's, that's pretty much your construction costs right there. Again, where the escal, and then that's up higher-
So that's, that's not, that's not, that's the two-and-a-half line moving it-
Moving it out of the pavement.
Moving it out of the pavement.
Diting the road.
Going to 18 feet.
Going to 18 feet with ditches for drainage, and cleaning up the right-of-way there.
Is that, is that still going to be two-and-a-half inch when you move it? Is it, or?
Yes, yes, just moving it, like I said, currently, right now, some of it is under the pavement, some of it actually isn't, but again, this would move it completely out of the pavement.
Is this just paving, or is this a complete re-
That's the complete, that's with relocating the two-and-a-half-inch line.
Is this a reclamation, where we're going to grind the road?
No, this is, you will, you will channel out the side, you know, the sides there, you will channel out and place base in it, but the paving would be over the widening part, too. It's kind of like, on a smaller scale, how they're, not widening, but they're doing the two-foot shoulders on Van Wyck Road. If you've seen them gone by, they said, "What are they doing?" They've channeled out, placed base in, now they're going to come and overlay Van Wyck Road. That would be what option one would do to Rise Lane.
Now, Mr. Chair, what I don't want to do is choose an option that we're going to have to pay for later, I think Bryant mentioned that, while we've got the money to do it, do we want to choose an option that's going to fail us down the road, and we've got to pull money out of the general budget to do it? Do we do it now correctly, while we've got the money in the Proviso?
Go ahead, Mr. Mausteller.
I have concerns about, you know, with the, with the water line being under the road, because a lot of times, those water lines will leak under the road, and you don't know it, and before you know it, the road's caving in because the, the base of it is done sinking in, and then you've got a big area of road to repair. And, and, you know, I've seen that before, so that, that's a concern with me, is what's going to happen with a water line bursting under the, or just seep for a period of years and thus not know it, you know, and it just soak and soak and soak, and once cars running over, it just keeps settling, keeps settling, and, and then you've got, you've got a big, big area there to have to repair.
Yes, sir. Yes, and that's, you know, going to be with any of it, even with the, during construction, there could be damage to the water line. That happens, that happens when we patch potholes sometimes. One thing that I've seen over the years is, when you're paving and compacting the pavement and the subgrade back in, you may not know it, but you may have caused a leak on the main or at AT or a service, you know, going out, and over time, it shows up and, you know, bleeds through the pavement, and then you've got a water leak, which is, which is why we've always, everything we've done here lately, we've taken and relocated the water lines if they were under the pavement, as long as we had right-of-way. Some of our county roads, again, 10 years ago, we didn't think we had right-of-way up there, so it would have been, it would have been option three, but knowing what we had and what we could do, that's why we started our design with what is currently option two.
Mr. Kato, I appreciate, I, let me ask you one more question about this. I definitely have concerns about leaving the water line under the road, because I think that's asking for something at some point, whenever that point is. So the, the paving the road on option three is 250, I mean, and the water line movement's 175, could we, is there possibility of doing option three and move the water line at 175, and that, then you're at 375 roughly? I mean, is that unreasonable, or is there something I'm not thinking about there? I'm saying, 250 plus 175. Yeah, okay. You're right. It's been a long day.
Option, option three is, is really, basically, you're taking a milling machine in there and grinding off the edge, and then you're covering it up, so that's why your pavement is-
It's cheaper.
405 includes the widening, and anything you relocate, you know, you're going to have to, you know, move some of the comporium stuff and all as well, that's compacting those ditches back and giving that 18 feet of pavement a base to sit on, that's why it's 450, so. So would I move the water line and then do the two-foot mill? No, sir, personally, I wouldn't recommend doing that.
Mr. Cato, so if we did, can we go to bid with option one and option three at the same time? And ask people to kind of bid both options?
Yes, yes, you can. Option three is, you know, that's a bid from our on-call paving contractor. We can, we have a contract for smaller paving jobs to use, so, you know, you do, we got with procurement, option three is what it is. That's the price. It's just option one, we got to get the bids in and see where they are. Hopefully, hopefully, they're lower, because we, you know, we do have it a little bit higher, basically, because this is a standalone road. Okay? We're bidding it by itself. It's got this water line, it's a dead end, you know, traffic control. This is going to be a difficult job, so we're going to have to stay in real good communication with the residents and emergency services and the contractor, because it's not going to be easy. We have it as a, you know, a 60-day completion, we're hoping, after we bid it, but those 60 days will be very tedious in and out of there. You could, you could do it that way, but like I said, option three kind of is what it is. That's where, that's where we would go if, if we wanted to, just in my opinion, take a small step backwards and do something up there.
I'll tell a little anecdote, just to go along with this. Going to work in Rock Hill, going through Fort Mill, there is a section in front of the Wacoia Bank over there, that the town of Fort Mill has worked on the water line at least four or five times in the last five or six years. And, you know, they've got a lot of water lines under the road, but that, that's just what pops in my mind when you talk about leaving the water line and the road is, you know, it, there's always possibility for an issue, and it's easier if it's sitting over on the side where you're just digging dirt and not digging up pavement, so.
I'm not necessarily disagreeing, I just, what I'd like to do is keep the options open, because right now, we're anticipating that's what it's going to be, but if it ends up being a million, and the other one's 250, do we want to take a look at it then? So for me, I just kind of like to see what those bids end up being on both sides, just so that we get more clarity on it.
Yes, sir, we can report back the bid tabs when they're in.
Yep.
And we can, again, to be clear, we can list a bid alternate for the lesser amount, so.
Yep, okay. Because I'm getting.
You're saying you're okay at 580 for option one?
I'm not saying I'm okay. No, no, that's not what I'm saying at all.
Saying he's open.
You're open if it, well, I'm.
I'm open to, I'm open to discussing it, just because I get the water line issues and the concerns. I regret that we're here, but regardless of the history, we are here now.
It's better than the option of.
It's better than where we were.
Right, right.
So I'm happy in the direction that we're going, that it's saving some costs. And I would love to kind of have conversations with the residents and kind of talk to them about it as well. So while we're going through that bid process, we could have those conversations. Because I know one, one of them was even in the newspaper, was quoted as saying they were surprised at how expensive it was, and they understood the concerns, so.
All right, thank you for all the conversation. I think we've got a direction in which we want to go.
Oh, let me make sure, I think we need a motion. Yeah, we need a motion for a direction of what to bid.
Do we have a motion? You want to put your scenario in a motion, Mr. Luis?
Make it simple.
I would like to make a motion that we move forward with looking at option three and option three as bids. I'm sorry, option one and option three as bids.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. Luis. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Mr. Graham. Any additional conversation or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. All those opposed, it's unanimous. All right, we're going to move on, Mr. Cato, to 9C transportation sales tax proposal.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of council, good to be back again to, again, just coming forward at our last meeting, we discussed it, and then again, coming forward for this evening, because the clock is kind of ticking on if we wanted to do a November 2025 sales tax, that we need to kind of get ready and get working on that, or do we want to, you know, council asks, maybe wants to pause a little while. Again, this is kind of the same presentation, just cleaned up one of the bid sheets, so we can go to the next again, we all know, and the estimates, again, the only option is a dedicated funding source, I think we all know that. And then the sales tax generated 16 million. Okay, and back one, please, or I had one. Okay, this was the 2024 proposal, again, at 405 million, and you can see the different areas of where we had wanted to place the funding. Again, again, that's a sales tax, not a capital sales tax, where the ballot doesn't have to have individual projects listed, so we listed in areas of spending. Obviously, the big one is the major widenings in 521, so that was the 2024 proposal.
Actually, if you can back up one slide, please, I did want to highlight for council about, when we did the projections for revenue in the past, just so you have the information, the 1% sales tax does generate, in FY '24, the 16.5 million. It has had a 15-year average growth of 8.7. There's a high year of 22.1, a low of a negative 6.9, but if we did the 10-year projection, factored in a 9% growth rate, it would generate 256 million. So I wanted you to understand the revenue projection, knowing what is coming online in the next couple of years with some big-box retailers and other things. We feel like the 9% average growth would be a safe projection, and that's how we got to the 256. Next slide.
Again, this was kind of the direction, okay. Here was the, again, next one, that was the 2024. And then the direction from the retreat, again, we kind of listened to what you said. Well, one thing, you know, we did kind of take into consideration and listen to, and definitely want some guidance on that, is possibly, if a transportation sales tax were to pass, could we eliminate the road fee? And again, we would need the money to offset that, because that's $35 million over 10 years, that, again, is road fee, so it is basically used in the road maintenance area. It's not all used for paving roads. In fact, very little of it is used for paving roads. That's the preservation program, about 800,000 a year of that is used on the preservation. Everything else is what we use for road maintenance, so we'd have to, have to kind of keep track on that and make sure that we're taking care of well, and a reduction, and that money that goes to the general fund that offsets the road maintenance fund would now be in this, in this sales tax funding. Okay. And then the CTC, as Chairman Carter spoke this evening, they met and recommended and had come up with a 10-year, $216 million recommendations, and the highlight of that is the 70 million for 521 and the 21 million for Barbourville Road, that was their recommendation on their bigger widening projects of such. And then the 85 million for the municipalities and the county, and the county roads throughout the rest of the county. Again, had a couple of roundabouts in there, and then a miscellaneous tab, but we tweaked that on staff, so. Next one, please. That was just a list of some of the roads that we looked at. And then the staff recommendation, again, we, what we did is we took out the slide for miscellaneous, because of the concern of just what is miscellaneous. So what we have proposed was to replace, again, and we spoke with ARFATs a little, and their planning side said, you know, if you're going to start somewhere, and I know we all talk about outlets to get off 521 for the future, a collector road system, they felt that Henry Harris Road was a higher priority to do there at this time, even though DOT actually has no immediate plans for Barbourville, Harrisburg, or Henry Harris right now in the immediate future, so. We kind of switched those two out and placed more money into the county road paving and the municipality road paving, about $115 million. And again, that's, that's where Public Works and staff would live. That's actually your resurfacing contracts. We do a lot, we do a lot of state roads with them, like Cleveland Street, but that's, that's what Lancaster County's end of administration would be on that one. Of course, we would administer the entire program, but that's where, and again, in talking with, I guess, people south of five, so to speak, we didn't hear a lot of ideas about, we need a big project out in our area. People just want to see roads fixed, so we've got a good bit of funding involved in that. And again, we added in some for greenways and sidewalks, because we get, we get a lot of calls about that. DOT was kind of supportive of that as well, whereas CTC did not recommend, any staff has added that in. So when you add that in to ours, it's 253 million versus 216, but most of that difference, again, we took some, we took 10 million off of 521 instead of 70, we cut it back to 60, most of that money is placed in the resurfacing county, state, municipalities, and we did some more intersection improvements. Some of your larger secondary, most of those will be DOT-administered projects, you know, turn lanes, widenings of the state secondaries and such. So that's kind of the recommendation staff has come up with, and again, we're just, timing is everything, so we're ready, but we want to be comfortable, make sure that you're all ready. And again, the big thing, Chairman Carter, to echo his thoughts this morning, is right, we need to educate real well on this and let folks know, this is what we're going to be doing, and this is how we're going to do it.
Go ahead, Ms. McGrath.
You know, I am totally in favor of the transportation tax. It's just that the timeframe, I think that's where the discussion was about last time, is that do we put it on this year's ballot, or do we put it on the next year's ballot? And will that timeframe for this year's give us enough time to provide the awareness to the community that we need to provide? The educational piece on what's going to happen, where the money is going and things like that? So, you know, I'm 100% behind the sale tax. Just need to decide on when, when we're going to put it on the, out there for a vote.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I think, I think, I think council knows where I stand on this. I think, I think it is the number-one thing that citizens talk to me about in District One is, is roads, and 521 comes up a fair amount, but there's a number of, a number of concerns about what's coming on 521 and the other, other approved housing units that haven't been built yet, and just the overall impact. And for that reason, I really would like to see us move forward this year and get this on the ballot, so that we can move forward.
Go ahead, Mr. Mossdeller.
My personal opinion, I think this year is risky. That's my personal opinion. People have done said no this past time. I think we, people's going to say, you know, I done said no one time, and here you are bringing it back again. I think we need to let people sit on it a little bit and, you know, we educate them, we have more time to educate the people on what we're trying to do and everything, instead of rushing it through like we did last time. It was a rush-through job last time, and I think we, to get the education out to the people and not rush our voter registration, I mean, it's just a big nightmare when you're trying to get it on the ballot for November this year, it really is. And I just don't know if you're going to have enough time to educate the people, I really don't. I don't think it'll pass this November.
I agree with Councilman Graham on that. I'd like to see us move forward. I don't think we, I mean, we got a choice, but these people want these roads done, and put it into people's hands and let them vote on it. I think it's just, I think we need to move forward with it.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Luis.
So I agree that something needs to be done. I think we probably need to look a little closer at where we're making some of these allocations and some of the determinations that we're making about road widenings. So for example, when we're talking about 521 widenings, what does that mean?
I mean, that would mean the additional lane. That was the plan back in 2022.
But starting where and going where?
That would be starting, the original plan was, I think, 160 Marvin Road to the state line, but with this, I think you're talking about coming on down to, I believe it's Van Wyck, Highway 5, Van Wyck, 75, I'm sorry.
75?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and then when we're talking about Henry Harris, or when we're talking about Barbourville, what are we talking about for those improvements?
Talking about probably three lanes of Henry Harris and/or Barbourville. Like I said, again, that would be something where the funding would be there. Again, you have, we have to, those are state roads, so they would have the design. They may say, we're still just going to have staggered turn lanes, here, that, and the other, but again, what we're looking at is a way to have at least a three-lane road all the way through.
And I guess that's part of where I'm, where, if we can get that information and some more detail around that, is exactly what our constituents are going to be expecting to vote on and have some meat on the bone, as opposed to just these esoteric concepts. I agree that these things need to be done. I also would like to consider maybe not putting so much onto 521, because we've all said and heard that that's going to take seven to 10 years. Perhaps what we do is we reinvest some of the funds that we were looking at 521 and putting it into Barbourville, Harrisburg, and Henry Harris, have all of those as corollary roads that are now alleviating some of the pressure points that are all coming into 521 now. And maybe that's a solution, especially with all the stuff that's happening on Harrisburg Road and Henry Harris, with schools that are coming online and everything like that. So I, I agree, I would love to have something on the ballot this year. We just need to start moving quickly in order to get that done, and we need to get some clarity on that.
I will make one comment on roads, and this is not to try to exclude anybody, but Barbourville Road is a cut-through road for people coming from York County to go to Mecklenburg County. It's, and it's used some by citizens of Lancaster County, but Harrisburg Road and Henry Harris would be much more utilized by citizens of Lancaster County than Barbourville.
I'm just saying, look at the reallocations and look at the work, and that's exactly my point, like, let's get some more detail on what we're expecting, because I think to Mr. Mossdeller's point, if we're just rushing something through without a lot of clarity, we then blame the constituents, because they didn't understand that, when really, it's on us. They understood exactly what it was, they just didn't like it, was the feedback that I got.
I, I hear what you're saying. However, there's been nothing on 521 and on those roads that have been done since county council has approved things. To me, this is not a rush job. This is, this is behind, we're behind on this, and if we continue to sit back and wait, it's just going to be another year, and then we're going, you know, we're going to come up with another reason why not to do something. We need to move forward and make decisions in 2025 to put infrastructure in this county. We have delayed too long as a county on infrastructure. We need to move forward.
I don't disagree. All I'm pointing out is, we heard this two weeks ago, and it's the same presentation that we heard two weeks ago. Nothing has changed.
Until we decide that we're going to move forward or not going to move forward, we're probably going to hear the same thing, because.
That's my point.
We've got to, we've got to decide whether we're going to put some meat on the bone or not.
Yep.
I will give a little historical context here. I remember when 521 was widened to, to the current two lanes each way, and that was in 1977. I remember that, because somebody ran in the back of me when I was getting ready to turn on Marvin Road off of 521, so.
You know, we really need to decide whether we're going to put it on the ballot for November. If we are, that's when the details, we need to decide details on. If we are, that's when the details, we need to decide details on, you know, what's going to be included so we can educate the community on what's going to be on the ballot. That's the main concern is educating our citizens as to what they're voting on. And we need time to do that. So the longer we wait, the longer it's going to take to provide that educational...
What do we need right now? What do you need, Mr. Cato?
We just...
Your vote?
Yes, we would like a vote to see...
I'd like to make a motion to move forward with an analysis of moving forward with the transportation tax for this year's November ballot.
Let's see if we might be able to help give some more clarity to that.
We got two recommendations.
So in order to move it forward, what we need to do is have a resolution to call for a referendum and an ordinance. So that process, through that process with the ordinance, we can do this refinement and the analysis. So if you can refine your motion and say bring forward the legislation that will allow for a referendum and a ballot question, that would be...
I would like to make a resolution for that.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Luis as amended to what Merk Dupont said. Do you still support that as a second? And we have a second from Mr. Neal. Now, any additional discussions? Hearing no discussions, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. We have six, four, and one opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm opposed to it, I'm just opposed to the time.
Well, you got a chance to vote against it. I mean, just get an additional...
Okay, Ms. Harden, you hiding over there behind the counter? Comprehensive Plan update.
Thank you, sir. As promised, you have in your packet the Comprehensive Plan update. This is basically taking the section of the implementation strategies for the different sections of the Comprehensive Plan and giving you an update on every one of them as to whether there has been progress made or if they've been completed. As a reminder, this is a 10-year plan, so we don't expect everything to be completed. I was very pleasantly surprised that we had as much started through the process as we did. And I don't have a presentation to go through it because it's much better if anyone who wants to go through it to actually read it. I've made it as easy to understand as possible that for every item that we have that's an objective or a strategy for the Comprehensive Plan, there is an update below it highlighted in yellow so that they know what the status is. We have some really, we have some really big ticket items like analyzing the current and future infrastructure and services needs on a countywide basis to manage growth. The discussion you've just had about the pending tax applies to that. The meeting that you had with Lancaster City that had a lot of discussion about growth for the city area covers both the county objectives and the area GL, which is General Lancaster. We've had some activities in the Panhandle area. One of the things that comes up often in the Panhandle discussion about growth is how a lot of people would like it if we could say no to new growth and subdivisions if the schools and the roads are not able to absorb the capacity. So on PA 31, we update that the concurrency measures that we talked about with the comp plan, didn't go through the comp plan, but they are now part of a state bill. There's a bill in the House and a bill in the Senate, and we've given the numbers and letting you know that we're tracking those as they go through committee. That would provide for every community in South Carolina to use that as an option. And then we also have activities in the Greater Lancaster and in Southern Lancaster. Southern Lancaster, our biggest activities right now are working with Kershaw and in the realm of parks and recreation. But we hope to have some more discussion there. We've had requests from Mr. Douglas about discussing future land uses in and around the city of, or the town of Kershaw. In addition, since that time, I did not include it in your packet because it's more of an internal tracking document, but I'll be happy to provide a copy to anybody that wants to. We did a crosswalk with the strategic plan that you approved on the three-year plan and the Comprehensive Plan and the different places where they intersect, where something that we do with the public safety objectives, for instance, can meet also at the same time a comp plan objective. And so those are the kind of discussions that we have when we're looking at how are we participating with these projects as far as planning goals? That if it meets many, many goals, then we're going to put more effort into doing this project that meets multiple objectives rather than a smaller one or one that doesn't meet the objectives of your strategic plan as well as comp plan.
All right. Is there any questions?
I just got a comment. Thank you for highlighting my name as an update. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
But I also appreciated reading the updates. They were just kind of brought back some of the things that we were doing. So I enjoyed reading the updates.
I really enjoyed working with the rest of the department directors to ask them, what have you done that relates to the Comprehensive Plan? There were a couple of them that said, well, I don't know about what's in the comp plan. And we had a nice discussion about it and shared the crosswalk about the strategic plan and the like. And it was really rewarding to go through and realize that we are not as far apart as sometimes people think.
Any other comments? All right, we're going to move on to Item 11A, Executive Session. We need a motion to go into executive session for receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding impact fees and receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding legal services. Do I have a motion? I have a motion from Mr. Griff and a second from Mr. Luis. All those in favor? It's unanimous, we are now in executive session.
Do we have a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Have a motion, the second, to come out of executive session. A motion for Ms. McGriff, second, for Mr. Mossdellner. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. We're out of the executive session.
Mr. Chairman, Council met in executive session in regards to two items. The receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding impact fees, and the receipt of legal advice subject to the attorney-client privilege regarding legal services. No motions were made, no votes were taken.
And a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We adjourned.